Good morning. It is now ten oh one A M. Today is March seventh, twenty twenty-three, and I want to welcome everybody present in your chamber. As we begin our confirmation hearing of those appointed by Governor Palacios and Lieutenant Governor Apotham. And to our viewing public out there, saludo para todos samzo y maneja. Gahu si Selena Babata, and I am the Chair of this Senate Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations. Before we proceed, I'd like to take care of some housekeeping matters. We ask that everyone please silence your phone to minimize distractions while we are in session. Additionally, we are live on cable channel twenty-three and on the NMI Legislature's Facebook page. And I want to caution everyone that even though we break for a recess or for whatever reason, the Facebook Live will continue to stream. At this time, I want to introduce the members of the Legislative Bureau assisting our committee today. We have Council Mr. Joe Bermudas. We have our Legislative Assistant assigned to EAGI, Mr. Devin Macarons. And our I T Manager, Mr. Jonathan Diaz, is responsible for the television of this committee hearing. And we also have our Sergeant at Arms, Mr. Will Ogun. At this time, I would like to recognize the L A, Mr. Devin Macarons, to call the roll.
Senator Selena Arbabaata.
Present.
Senator Paul A. Manglonia. Senator Donald M. Manglonia.
Present.
Senator Dennis C. Mendiola. Madam Chair, all members of the Senate EAGI Committee are present.
Thank you, Mr. Macarons. And we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt today's agenda, please? Motion has been made by Senator Donald Manglonia and has been seconded by Senator Paul Manglonia to adopt today's agenda. Are there any discussions or concerns on the agenda? There are none ready. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Today's agenda is duly adopted. Today, we will examine the nomination of Mr. Pedro I. Itibos for the position of Director for the Commonwealth Utilities Board of Directors. And this is a process unique to the Senate, the advice and consent of all nominees of the administration. And that is why we are here today. And at this time, I would like to invite the Special Assistant for Administration, Mr. Oscar Babata, and the nominee, Mr. Pedro Itibos, to join us in the chamber. And at this time also, are there any members who wish to make a statement before I open the floor for the SAA? If there are none, we will proceed. Mr. Babata, you may proceed with your statement.
Buenos dias, Pedro. Pedro, how far day? Good morning, look, Madam Chair and your esteemed members of this august body Committee on Executive Performance and Governmental Investigation. It's a nice day, Madam Chair. It's always good to be back and meet the members of this august body. For the record, my name is Oscar M. Babata, Special Assistant for the Administration under the Office of Governor Arnold I. Palacios and that of Lieutenant Governor David M. Apotham. I thank you for the opportunity to appear once again before you today. I'm here officially to introduce the Governor's nominee for the Commonwealth Utility Corporation Board of Directors, a member, Mr. Pedro I. Itibos, who is currently in the chamber with us. Mr. Itibos has an extensive experience, both professional and otherwise, with over fifty years of experience in various capacity. At first, he started as a law enforcement officer from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-eight for the Trust Superior Government and that of the CNMI Government through the Department of Public Safety, before moving on as a deputy clerk in our Commonwealth Courts, primarily in the Superior Courts. In nineteen eighty-eight, he worked under the Department of Public Lands as a land investigator before being promoted to the Chief of Land Claims Division. He was named also the Deputy Secretary of Public Lands before he was appointed by former Governor Benigno Fitiya to be the Secretary of Public Lands, where he served until his retirement in twenty sixteen. Madam Chair and members, I had the opportunity to engage both personally and privately, professionally and privately with Mr. Itibos while I was the Secretary of Department of Public Land back in twenty-ten to twenty-twelve. He was indeed our land claims manager, division managers, assessing all land claims that have been in limbo for quite some times. We have achieved many, in greater detail, in many successful settlements of all these land issues towards our people that were waiting for land issues to be resolved by the CNMI Government. I found Mr. Itibos to be competent myself. He is very well articulate in issues. And most he has the strength in policy decisions. Been in that capacity for many years, and I would say fifty years of experiences. He has shared thoughts and resolutions to many matters that are pending both in his prior employment with the Trust Superior Government and that of the Commonwealth Government. And recently, as I stated earlier, as a coworker and a branch manager in the Department of Public Lands. I share his thoughts and accept his recommendations based on many factors. And under myself, Secretary of Public Lands, former Secretary of Public Lands conceding to his recommendations. Therefore, it allows us to move forward with settlements of many vital issues confronting our citizens. I know he stands ready to answer your questions, Madam Chair and Members. And is present and will present some of his plans for the future of his nominated board to this longstanding issues with our Commonwealth Utility Corporation. His long history of professional experiences, credentials, and commitment to serving the Commonwealth in this capacity makes him a viable candidate. And we kindly ask for expeditions approval and due considerations in confirming Mr. Itibos in the whole Senate body whenever you call the President Call to session. With that being said, Madam Chair, I thank you. And I offer my gilisso rem para todos samzo for the opportunity this morning again to bring the Administration's nominee to the as a member of the Board of Commonwealth Utility Corporations. Enjoy your day, Madam Chair and Members. And Mr. Itibos is here to shed some light should any inquiry comes from any member. Thank you so much, Madam President, Madam Chair and Members.
Thank you, Mr. Babata. Before I open the floor to the nominee, we will go on with the public comments portion of the agenda for today. And I ask that if you wish to make public comments, please identify yourself and/or the entity you represent. And according to the Senate rules, you will be allowed five minutes. I think we can go over that. We've known, been known to do so and accommodate speakers. So I now open the floor for public comments.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the same body of this committee. My name is Felix Nogis. I'm here on behalf of the Carolinian Community and the Office of Carolinian Affairs, which nominated Mr. Itibos to be a member of the C U C Board. Throughout Mr. Itibos' government career, he has distinguished himself and earned the respect of his superior and colleagues. With his qualification and experience, Madam Chair, he brings a broader perspective and insight to the board, should he be confirmed. With the indulgence of this committee, I humbly request your utmost consideration and support in confirming Mr. Itibos to the C U C Board. In closing, we extend our appreciation and gratitude in according as the opportunity to testify on Mr. Itibos' behalf. Sisus masi, gilisso, and thank you very much.
Sisus masi, Mr. Nogis, may I ask you to please, if you'd like, to turn in your comments to our Sergeant at Arms for our records. Thank you, and the floor is still open for public comments. Also joining us is Senior Sergeant at Arms, Mr. Pedro Tawain.
Good morning, Chairwoman Babata and the Honorable Senate Members of this committee. My name is Bettina G. Terlahi, better known as Betty Terlahi. I will be providing two separate comments in support of Mr. Pedro I. Itibos this morning. First, please allow me to speak on behalf of C U C's Acting Executive Director, Dr. Dallas M. PV Junior. Dr. PV wished to be here himself. Unfortunately, he was pre-scheduled to be and is on Tinian today on C U C matters. But please allow me to read his letter of support. This letter is dated March sixth, twenty twenty-three, addressed to the Honorable Selena Arbabaata, Chairwoman, Committee on Executive Appointments and Government Investigations of the Senate. This letter is of support on the confirmation of Pedro I. Itibos to the C U C Board of Directors. Dear Chairwoman Babata, I am writing this letter to show my support of the Governor's nomination of Pedro I. Itibos to the Commonwealth Utilities Corporation Board of Directors to represent Saipan and the Carolinian Community. As a Newport member to C U C, Mr. Itibos will have the opportunity once again to serve the people of the CNMI. He is an experienced Board Director in developing programs and defining policies to advance the mission of the entity he represents. C U C provides essential services to the communities on Saipan, Tinian, and Rota. Should Mr. Itibos be confirmed, he will bring advantage to the corporation in its mission to improve the public services C U C provides. I look forward to working with him as a valuable member of the board. Thank you, and if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to let me know. Sincerely, Dr. Dallas M. PV Junior, Acting Executive Director. Madam Chair, may I continue?
You may.
Secondly, I would also like to make a statement in my personal and professional capacity as C U C's Chief of Administration in support of Governor Arnold Palacios's nomination of Pedro I. Itibos to the Commonwealth Utilities Corporation Board of Directors. Mr. Pedro I. Itibos has long been a public servant to the CNMI community. As former Chairman of the Commonwealth Economic Development Authority, formerly C D A, and a former member of upper management of the Department of Public Lands, Mr. Itibos brings experience in providing good governance and is not shy at all of matters that involve opposition to decisions he has to make in the best interest of the entity he represents. There is a lot of work to be done at the utility. Being a C U C Board Member is very time-consuming, and it is voluntary, unpaid. Mr. Itibos' willingness, evidenced by his presence today, to accept his public service calling once again is indicative to his commitment to making the CNMI a better home. Mr. Itibos is a family man with a beautiful family. Taking on this responsibility takes time away from them. But like all of us, we work hard for our families, and I know that's why Mr. Itibos is making this commitment today. I look forward to Mr. Itibos being a valuable resource to C U C. Thank you. Sisus masi, gilisso.
Thank you, Mr. Terlahi. May I ask you to please submit your testimony to our Sergeant at Arms? And the floor is still open for public comments. If there are none, I would now like to ask the nominee, Mr. Itibos, to please stand while the Legislative Assistant will administer the oath.
Mr. Pedro Itibos, you do solemnly swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you shall give in the matter at hand shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Itibos. And first off, if you would like to recognize any of your family members that are here, you may do so. And then if you would like to provide comments or a statement before the committee, you may do so at this time.
Sisus masi, Chair Babata. Then distinguished members of this committee. No, then sisus masi, look, no, Mr. Babata and Mr. Nogis, Mr. Lai, for the, in appear to support me in my nomination for C U C Board. I have my beautiful family here with me, behind me. Bernadita Cabrera Itibos, my two daughter, Ramona C. Itibos, and Emma C. Itibos, and my beautiful grandson, Wilip. And thank you all. No, I would just like to make a very, very short statement. It's, I don't have anything in writing. So first, I would like to give a great thanks to our Governor Arnold I. Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David M. Apotham for having the confidence to appoint me to the Board of Commonwealth Utility Corporation. I am honored to be a member of that Board if confirmed by this distinguished committee. I am looking forward for the challenges. I know there's a sermon to buwawu challenge in the Commonwealth Utility Corporation. The few, rising of few prices, which we do not have any control over it. But we can depart from fuel and venture into other energy resources. That is a very, very challenging task. I'm looking forward to those tasks. And I'm honored to be here and answer whatever question this committee may have. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Itibos. And we will now open the floor for members to, for the Q and A portion, questions and answers. And if there are any members who wish to pose any questions of the nominee, please raise your hand so I can recognize you. Recognize Senator Dennis Mendiola.
Mr. Itibos, I guess I'll go ahead and start first. Mr. Itibos, I'm looking at your resume or portfolio. And it seems like your expertise, your background, is heavily composed of enforcement. So with that, with that in mind, I'm curious to ask if being a member of this board, will it pose as a challenge for you in terms of experience and expertise?
Let me be honest with you. I don't have any experience in power generation. But I am willing to learn. I'll sit and listen to those expert. If I need a question, I'll seek out somebody that would assist me in whatever the challenge is I am seeking.
If I may continue? Thank you for that, Mr. Itibos. Can I move on to renewable energy? It's been, I think if you pay attention to a lot of our global issues, renewable energy has kind of hit the headlines a lot. So I'm just curious to know, what are your thoughts on that?
That's where I'm leaning toward because of the few rising prices which fluctuate more up than down. We need the expert in that, in that field. It would be a tremendous help to our community, those that are relied on C U C power. Because I believe there there will be some reduction or assistance in that, toward that goal.
I agree with you. I think that renewable energy is probably something that, especially with the rising cost of fuel, will help our community a lot by reducing a lot of our costs or, I guess, charges to our people. So thank you for that. Are you for now, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Senator Mendiola. The floor is still open for other members of the committee. Recognize Senator Paul Manglonia.
Thank you, Chair. Actually, tazza, joke question. The man I like, yes, he, the nominee, the professional, he, he power. Now, he is a senior, no, probably not zudas, and no, at you, look, he often molly pay to touta, see, not, and he tanota. Low, puti, puti, I guess, D P O, no, Mr. Itibos, do you know if there's still a lot of, is the power distribution, waterline encroachment? The C U C, see, are you familiar with that?
I think there's a lot. I think there's a lot. So the last time when we had the transition, Mr. Nogis is here, we asked D P O Acting Secretary about that, and they
There's still a lot of private lands where our water lines and our distribution lines are coaching, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
And for those landowners, is it still the practice that the C U C gives them a break in their own water consumption or power consumption dealings? Is that a practice?
I believe when I was still with the D P O, I think Mr. Babata can attest to that. We were approached by landowners, and that's, they suggested that's another way of payment. C U C is reluctant to do that, so I don't know what.
Okay. Well, I don't expect you to have the detail, but that's something that I think C U C has to continuously address so that we resolve all those issues.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate your help when you get in there to look at that matter.
I will.
As far as trying to compensate these landowners. And I guess also it will go a long way in addressing C U C's financial issues that are very challenging to C U C. Mr. Itibos, I have introduced a bill in the Senate, and it's number twenty-three, that's twenty-one, twenty-nine, twenty-three, twenty-nine. Basically, this has been, had been introduced several times in the past since twenty-seven, after twenty-seventeen. And I hope to see it progress now to actual discussion and consideration by the legislature. I ask for your for your understanding and to look at this legislation. And I think the Committee on P U T C, which I chair, we will be calling for a public hearing on this particular bill. But do you have any, you have any comment about the need for politics and lawmakers and politicians to stay out of the business of Commonwealth Utility Corporation? Do you have a sense of that happening over the years? If you care to comment, in operating C U C, could you comment over the years, no? Actually, you know, who introduced this, the twenty-fourteen, the O P A, monauzung audit report, the audit report. No, I, in didikar, see, no, me, gonna, okay, soon, I, ilistatura, manolum, the, see, as, medire, it's, yeah, no, no, so, my, my, any, C U C, not, for, my, my, nasty, but, you know, mungama, fane, so, na, genereta, no, man, para, I, administration over the years, was, yeah, no, man, they, and, talo, no? Puis, no, is, in a bill, kalan, para, na, independence, you know, the, the, para, na, my, lihi, i, C U C Board, no, low, post, tablessi, dos, na, division, low, low, uno, na, board, no? No, kalan, basically, no, ma, na, tatisia, it's, syrup, Guam, no, na, class, syrup. It's, I, I, water, it's, I, I, power, uno, na, board. No, still, God, they be, P U C, para, o, im, Baba, fa, you, man, na, ki, ko, afai, i, i, junior, no, programa, i, C U C, na, ti, por, na, siguru, na, ti, u, fan, macha, si, publico, mas, ki, ginaga, ko. Pus, tazza, ti, tazza, question, gini, ko, wow, drum, opinyun, no, musta, ti, pago, but, musta, gi, public hearing, o, Senaka, desi, the, tazza, gini, i, go, i, but, na, independence, I, C U C, o, molly, gisonya, operation, the, u, fan, libra, no, i, consumers, no, pus, ang, go, opinyun, mo, no, Chair, no, be, fa, si, pago, si, Mr. Itibos, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Manglonia. If you wish to provide an opinion as to that at this time, if not, we can ask.
I was scrolling through my I was I was scrolling through my Facebook and I saw that and I don't have the full context of I was trying to get a full context of that bill. So I so that I can understand the intention. If you know, I I don't want to make comment now. Then, Kumamflikomo, let's say, in confirmed, is that I I go to C U C and then after learning so much. And then I I I kind of feel that the view will not in any way assist us. It might conflict my my comment now and and future comments, so. After after that, I would I would like to comment after the view has, you know, come to us and we'll examine it and that will be probably the proper time for for me to comment. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Itubus. I have a few questions. The transit, have you read the transition report for C U C?
No, no.
Okay, I encourage you to do so. The transition report, the the transition report underlines the need for a resolution to C H C C's arrears. Mandiling Quet Quente. The C H C C, over fifty million dollars. So that C U C can sustain itself financially and sustain its operations and and this this debt to C U C is being absorbed by other government, everyone else. Other government agencies, private individuals, households. And that's very concerning. If confirmed, what are your plans to to immediately resolve this? You, as a board member, will sit to negotiate whatever needs to be negotiated, but this resolution is it's been going on for many, many years. And we need, as a legislative body, we need to see that agencies are are resolving their internal issues without having us to step in and create legislation or or something else that may advance resolution. We would rather stay out of it, really. So what are your plans, if confirmed, to resolve this?
It is very complicated issue. So, yeah, everyone. To the city, to move on. It's pitot gov. Public health. Come to the country, the is pitot, man, problem. Plus, how do we resolve that? I mean, the government has to step up and assist, I believe. So, some busy is pitot. Must try to go. Everybody is struggling. So, I cannot give you my immediate answer to that, Chair. I need to sit down with the C U C experts and who need to discuss it and maybe continue negotiating with the hospital.
Thank you. C U C, over the years, has been able to attract qualified individuals as required by the stipulated order. However, it has a very difficult time retaining these experts. Some of them include frustration with the Board of Directors not renewing contracts or recommending that contracts not be renewed. Some of them include frustrations with the C U C management. What are your thoughts on this? How do you
I believe.
As a board member? How how can they retain these experts? As required by the stipulated orders?
I believe we need to abide to that stipulated order. We need we need the the experts. We need to to follow the the required people, expert to to run C U C. We, there is no other way to get away from that, but just to follow that stipulated order.
Thank you. Since two thousand nine, nearly fourteen years ago, C U C has operated under two stipulated orders and have been under the watchful eye of the U S Environmental Protection Agency, E P A, and the U S Department of Justice, D O J, D O J. Yet longstanding violations of public health environmental environmental protection standards for water, wastewater, oil management continues to plague C U C. And that's why they haven't been able to cure the stipulated orders. To date, since two thousand nine, fourteen years ago, to date, fourteen major violations are still being monitored by the federal agencies appointed to to ensure compliance with the stipulated orders. If confirmed, this body would like to bring C U C quarterly to this chamber to give us an updated report on these. Like I said, any agency, any government agency out there should not wait for the legislature to step in. The P U T C Chairman, Senator Paul Manglonya, is here, and I think he would agree with me that we need consistent updates. You know, don't wait till it becomes a problem to knock on the legislature's door. I think we can resolve a lot of issues before it even gets to be a problem. So I'd like to advise you on that. And then one other, it's not a question, but one other item I'd like to bring up is, you know, in the Twenty-second House of Representatives, impeached former governor for theft of utilities. Pursuant to Title Four, Section eighty-one thirty-one. The governor may remove appointed board members for gross neglect, neglect of or dereliction of duty, breach of fiduciary duty, conviction of a felony or mental or physical incapacity. The previous management of C U C, including the Board of Directors, grossly neglected their duty by allowing former Governor Torres to accumulate over a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars in arrears in utility benefits from C U C during the period of February twenty fifteen to August twenty twenty-one to include exorbitant utility benefits for a pigree owned by an immediate relative that was operating on the private property. And also including paying for two residences. And I hope, I hope that history will not repeat itself at C U C. That's all I have for my comments or my questions, and I'll recognize any other member who wishes to pose any questions. Recognize Senator Donald Manglonya.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mr. Itubus.
Good morning.
I just want to thank you for your years of public service to the scene of my government, dating back to the trust territory times. You know, like you said, you you're willing to learn, you're willing to understand and and speak with the industry experts. But one thing that I do want to find out from you are what are at least one or two initiatives that you plan to to push for within the next four years, if confirmed?
My initiative is to look for an efficient power generation that would assist our community. Lower the their electrical bill, water bill, anything that would assist them in their daily life.
Have you looked at what types of renewable energy you think that would benefit the cinema?
There are several, but the most efficient that would be applicable, I believe would be applicable to us is solar. And I just I read in the paper a couple weeks ago. We are fortunate that we have a new power generation that was purchased. And I also read that the former Director of Commonwealth for Utility Corporation, they're ongoing with the solar power generation. And that's a that's a good news. It it's gonna take a while for it to to become a reality. But that would be, I think, the best the best way to to go.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Just have about one or two more, but recently, there's this agreement form that went public, and I just wanted to gather your thoughts on this. This agreement came out of C U C Water Division. The undersigned hereby attests that when hooked to up to the C U C water system, I will not question nor complain when the water pressure is low or when the water hours are cut short. I understand that the C U C Water Division is trying its best to improve the Saipan Water System and will cooperate and provide my understanding whenever there is a problem. I just want to hear what your thoughts are on that agreement from C U C.
I I I really feel for for them. In in our area in Kuala Lumpur, we have good good water, so.
Do you feel every ratepayer has the right to address their concerns and
Yes.
Make these complaints?
Yes, yes.
And so do you think this is something that should be looked at or do you think that the Water Division should be supported in this sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Just one more. What is your overall understanding, maybe, and thoughts on net metering?
I I believe it is a good system. All we're looking for is lower our bill.
Thank you, Mr. Itubus. Madam Chair.
Thank you, any other. Recognize Dennis Mendiola. Senator Dennis.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Itubus, I'm actually looking at again your resume and it's a double edged sword, no, so I'm disheartened that they had to pull you out of retirement, away from your family. But at the same time, given your experience and years of service, you know, that they solicit that type of expertise. But what it sounds like from a lot of the response in this in the line of questioning is that you're really just eager to just join the team and just kind of find solutions. My question to you is along the lines of Senator Manglonya, Donald, there is are you aware of the fiduciary duty of a board member for C U C? Do you know the roles and responsibilities?
Yes, I think I am aware of it because I was a a board member of the Commonwealth Development Authority. They have high standard of ethics and.
So given that, so given that awareness, I think one of the one of the biggest challenges that you guys face as board members is promulgating policies too. And this is more of a statement. Should you get confirmed? I think that Senator Paul here just talked about his bill that he's interested in. I think it's although you don't want to make a comment just so that it doesn't conflict when you do get confirmed, I I think it's very interesting or it's very vital that the board members do come and work with some of the legislators to promulgate these laws so that when it comes time to enforce them, there's really no questions of, you know, what are really the standards and what I'm starting to see is that a lot of times the terms or the responsibility defers in definition from person to person. So I think this is a good time for us to really start working together, you know, in terms of you guys promulgating policies at the board level and then also at the legislature, we promulgate laws that will regulate that. And it's there's clarity, so there's no confusion on whose role or responsibility it is. A lot of times, it's easier to just pass the buck, you know, and just say, oh, it's not my fault. But the problem is that with that statement, with that line of statement, our consumers are really the ones that are affected, you know. I I really dislike going on social media just because you hear the rants all the time, but it's also important for us to do address those because some of them are valid, some of them are legitimate. And as legislators, I know these guys, my colleagues here are really interested in trying to make the livelihood of our people better, so. While it's a double edged sword that you came out of retirement, I'm also excited for you because you still have the the drive to come up here and, you know, still try and be a contributing factor to our community. So I thank you for that. Are you for now, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Senator Mendiola. Recognize Senator Paul Manglonya.
Yes, Senator Dennis, you are exactly correct. He's a avid golfer, and so now he has to cut back on his playing golf with our friends. So I don't know why he wants to come back, but Pete and I, you know, just reading from the transition report, just on the water side, which I'm sure carries over to power generation and power distribution issues with the water, I I just want to summarize it a little bit here. Of course, the the main concern for the water is the stipulated order compliance. And so you're going to have a lot of headache in that because there's a lot of follow-ups. And the other concern with the water actually, and it impacts our our power according to this position report, and it's it's very, it's very true. I quote, "Impacts from significant water loss in the system include waste of water, the treatment cost to treat that water that's wasted, waste of energy, and C U C unnecessarily subjecting ratepayers to subsidize these inefficiencies." Make it a mistake, I give water. Is it billing, I give power and tally this, it's a billing. They put in there the the volume of water, but then also how much it costs for the electric charge, you know. So if we're producing so much and we're losing, what, sixty percent? Then that's not only water wasted, but power treatment, no consumption wasted. So I think a lot of the issues you're going to be facing to follow up with the management is in the engineering side, not any human resources to keep people on board, to have continuity than to to constantly. human resources to keep people on board, to have continuity, then, to to constantly follow up, see, and, eh, those associated costs, so. Welcome aboard, como, my, confirm, on, it, it, was, bull, I'm, a, the, you, lumbos, ah, it, a, total, again, I, zoom, see, ah, no, my, specter, no, reasonable rates, no? Just, mercy, and, no, that, no, question, mass, but, eh, point, not, eh, no, chair, Jesus, mercy.
Thank you, Senator Paul Manglona. Anybody else? If not, we can move along to the next portion on the agenda, which is miscellaneous. Does anybody have any miscellaneous matters to bring up or announce? If there are none, we can go into recess. It is now ten fifty-one A M. This meeting is hereby in recess until two P M this afternoon. Thank you.